Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call to order the West Covina City Council. This is Tuesday, April 19th. We'll begin our meeting tonight with our invocation by our city manager, Andrew Pasmat, followed by our pledge of allegiance from council member Armbrust. Please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, most holy and blessed, we ask that you guide our leaders tonight as they make the difficult decisions for this community. We thank you for the blessings of our families and our friends, and help us to walk worldly in your presence and forgive us when we fall short. May your Holy Spirit guide us in all our actions, and may your undeserved kindness, glory, and honor shine upon all those in attendance. In your name we pray. Amen.
Congratulations, Jesus. From the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought that was Mike. City Clerk Roakel.
Mayor, Chairman Herford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Vice Chairman Toohey.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Councilwoman Sanderson, I think, is going to be here. She's running a little late, so we'll announce when she arrives. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No, I have no changes to the agenda.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our presentations tonight. We're going to recognize Armenian Remembrance Day of April 23rd, 2011. I'll come down front. And we have Havanis Gasparian and Helen Garabedian, okay? We, once a year, we recognize this day, Armenian Remembrance Day. They're both from the Sangro Valley Chapter of the Armenian National Committee, and we're receiving a proclamation designating April 23rd, 2011, as Armenian Remembrance Day, which recognizes the 96th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. The Armenian genocide refers to the deliberate and systematic destruction of the Armenian population by the Ottoman Empire during and just after World War I. It's believed that between 1 and 1.5 million people were killed. With that, I present to you, on behalf of the city council, a proclamation declaring April 23rd, 2011, as Armenian Remembrance Day. I'd like you to say a few words. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, council members, thank you so much for allowing us this honor. It is much appreciated. We both are descendants of genocide survivors. My grandfather barely escaped. My parents, we all have family members that were, no one was left unaffected. For those of you who don't know, it happened, it started, we commemorated on April 24th every year because it was on April 24th, 1915, that the Ottoman Turks of the Ottoman Empire rounded up the intellectuals, the artists, the teachers in their, of the Armenian community, and just massacred them. And that was essentially the systematic beginning of women, children slaughtering, and mass deportations that occurred between 1915 up until 1923. And the reason why we're so passionate about it is because, to this day, the descendants, the Republic of Turkey, still denies that a genocide occurred. They claim that it was civil war, that, you know, there were casualties on both sides, that there was nothing systematic about it. But every credible historian and intellectual worldwide recognizes it. The great state of California, the great city of West Covina, recognizes it, and countless countries worldwide recognize the genocide. And so, we every year commemorate it. This year, on Saturday, this Saturday, we'll be commemorating it in Monobello, at Picknell Park, at the Armenian Genocide Martyrs Monument. It will be at 7:00 PM. There will be, we're hoping, thousands of people there coming out. We're going to have food, we're going to have events, and we're going to be, we're going to, it is a solemn event, but we are going to be sort of celebrating that we're still here. They tried to destroy us, but we have come, we have flourished, we have thrived, and we have a very strong population in Southern California, as across the US, and across the world as well. So we're still here, and we're still celebrating, and if you could join us, we would appreciate it, and thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's take a picture.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could we do the reporting now from closed session?
Absolutely. Report out from closed session, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to reflect that the City of West Covina City Council did convene its special meeting this evening as listed on the notice of special meeting in the West Covina City Council to consider those items listed on that special meeting agenda. And this constitutes my report out from closed session with regard to the first item, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Records should reflect that all of the council members were present, with the exception of Councilmember Sanderson. Report was provided by staff, however, no final action was taken on those items, and I have nothing further to report. With regard to item number two, that being conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, the record should reflect that all the council was present, with the exception of Councilmember Sanderson. Presentation was provided by staff and by legal counsel, however, no final action was taken, and I have nothing further to report on that item. With regard to item number three, records should reflect that the council, the entire council was present, with the exception of Councilmember Sanderson, and with regard to Councilmember, with regard to Councilmember Lane, there was a conflict with regard to Councilmember Lane, and so Councilmember Lane did not participate in that item. There was a report provided by staff and by legal counsel. No final action was taken, nothing further to report on that item. And finally, with regard to the fourth item, there was no need to consider that item, and it was not considered. And that concludes my report out in closed session.
Okay, thank you. I want to make one announcement before we begin. Tomorrow at BJ's Brewery in West Covina over Eastland Shopping Center, there will be an earthquake relief fundraiser for our sister city, Ottawa, Japan, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. If you bring one of these yellow coupons, and I assume there's some upstairs, you'll receive a 15% discount on your food sales, and that money will be donated to the Ottawa, Japan Relief Fund. So, it says to call ahead for seating. I'm not sure if you really need to do that, but from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM tomorrow at BJ's, okay? Okay, with that, we'll move on to oral communication. This is a time for the community to speak to the council on items under their purview. We'll start, you have five minutes, you'll be timed. We'll start with our first speaker, Deborah Ashby.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deborah Ashby. I'm with the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and I'm here tonight just to introduce myself to you, that I can be your liaison to the AQMD for any questions or concerns you might have. Also, I'm just making a few quick announcements, and I want to, and they're going to be very quick, but I want you to know that everything I'm talking about is on our website in detail. So I'm just going to touch on a few things, and I'm going to leave some information with you. First of all, tomorrow at AQMD, we're having an all-day conference on zero emission technologies, and you're invited to attend, as is the community. And there's, like I say, it's a free event tomorrow at our headquarters. Also, tomorrow is the first day of our very, very popular, our first day of registration for the lawnmower exchange program. And it's, every year, we exchange, people bring in their gas-powered mowers, that are highly polluting mowers, and exchange them for cordless electric mowers. And this year, for the first time, we have an option for a self-propelled mower. So I brought flyers on that. Registration opens tomorrow. Everyone's encouraged to go on the website rather than call, because the phones will just be, you know, very, very tied up tomorrow. So go online and register if you're interested in a mower. There are, there'll be several events where people will get their mowers, and the closest one to you will be in Pasadena on June 11th. There's also one in Rancho Cucamonga on the 18th. I've got flyers, so I've got that information. Also, we have now opened our nominations for the Clean Air Awards. Every year, AQMD honors individuals, organizations, cities, and companies that make extra efforts toward cleaning the air. And so if you can think of anyone that you'd like to have us honor, and you'd like to nominate, I brought forms for that, and I can also assist you with filling out the application if you can think of someone you'd like to honor. And finally, I brought some brochures for one of the funding sources that AQMD has that your city might want to take advantage of, and that's the Carl Moyer Program for heavy-duty engines, changing them out. There'll be workshops next month. This is the basic information, but there'll be workshops on how to do that as well. And anything I can do to assist you, including some of the funding that comes to your city, the AB 2766 funds, if I can assist you with coming up with some ideas on how that, those funds can be utilized, I'm a resource for you. And it's very nice to be here, and I'll leave my information with the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Rollin? Rollin?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here regarding item number three in the, regarding the Proposition 84 grant program. Been here in front of you before, for several years, requiring our needs of our league and of our community as well. I definitely think the program that we have is lacking certain locations or sites so we can accommodate the amount of kids that we have in our league. And by applying for this grant, it would definitely take care of some of the downfalls that we have at our site. So I'd ask that the city move forward with the application to apply for this grant. It's definitely needed in our community. It's something that we've been working for, for a long time. I know the city's been a big advocate as far as supporting youth programs in our community, and I commend you for that. A lot of you have been in the board, or have been part of the council, and have invested some of their personal time, come out and make sure that some of these programs are well-developed, and I thank you for that. So I want to say that if you could see that we can move forward with this program and continue on making good investments, we invest in the program that we have, and you understand the importance of after-school programs are vital in our community. So I just ask that you move forward with the application, and I want to thank all of our members here that are here today, supporting the behalf of the league. So thank you very much for being here, and thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Irene Fleck.
The first thing, I want to thank the city for their participation in our mixer at the Friends of the Library. We were very pleased with it, and we hope to make that an annual affair. And then, on behalf of West Covina Beautiful, I want to again invite everyone to come down to the city's celebration of Earth Day this Saturday from one, oops, from nine to one. And to remind you that from 10 to 11 will be the Arbor Day Celebration, sponsored by West Covina Beautiful. And this year, we're planting two trees, one in honor and memory of David Shively, and one in honor and memory of Norman Snyder. So everyone should come, it should be fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene, and that is at Orangewood Park, so.
That's Orangewood Park, across from the Edgewood.
I give that a blast, I really gotta read. Okay, thank you. Frederick Sykes.
I'm Frederick Sykes, West Covina resident. Good evening, Mayor, Council. And you knew I'd be back, so thank you for the invitation.
Did you get an invitation?
You don't remember, huh?
That's the last councilman.
You don't remember.
Oh, okay.
You really don't remember.
You're invited, you're always invited.
Well, let me remind you. I wanted to speak. I made some overt movements and passed in my card, and just my presence just make you want to go to work so fast that you forgot to let me speak. You said, "Oh, come back next week." You turned your card in too late. So that was the invitation, and I'm back. And nevertheless, that was discourteous, as you know, we talked about that in the lobby. And you even truncated the conclusion of the meeting just to bypass me. So that's okay. And I just hope it doesn't happen to other folks, because we need to stop this pattern that we have, this record of, that's too often, of unfair and not equal governance. And you know I've been preaching about that for, since 2006, and you just make it perfectly clear by doing what you did last week, because it is clearly a violation. But you were able to legally do what you did, but that doesn't make it right. And that's the theme for the night. Just because it's legal doesn't make it the right thing to do. Now, what I wanted to address was that you have a representative of the city that was here, making comments and so forth, and I just wanted to set the record straight. The website is www.fredicksikes.com. That's again, W-W-W-F-R-E-D-R-I-C-K-S-Y-K-E-S dot com. And I do address a number of issues at that website, and one of them is conflict of interest. And the information I get comes straight from the clerk's office, in particular when it comes to issues of the money factor. Now, when someone says that they don't get money from telecommunications companies for their campaign, that's only one part of the story, because we all know that there are other ways to gain finances and money from companies. And that can be told on what's called the 700 forms, which displays the income. And I'm, my effort is just to educate folks, that don't just verify and by what I say, go and follow my lead, go to the clerk's office, so you can see it as it's written. Now, the other issue that I wanted to address is Fire Station 5. Now, it's unbelievable that we're going to make our firefighters an experiment, because there has been no long-term type of studies on the effects of this type of energy. And the other egregious situation is that the folks that live above that tower and around that tower, they were there long before the 90-foot tower that's there to help our police and fire. But those folks tolerated that, because they were doing their part to assist with our public safety. But just because the tower is there as a public safety factor, it doesn't take away the hideous appearance, the way it interferes with some of these folks' view, what they paid for. Because again, you need to remember that they saw that view before the tower was there. And just because it's there for the police and fire did not make it look pretty. And then now, we have this installation, which is going to so-called co-locate. Well, first of all, I thought that co-locate meant that you would co-locate with a, with another company that does telecommunications. This is a additional location to augment with our fire department. Our fire department is not a telecommunications company. And to, to do this is only going to make things worse for those folks. And I want to repeat, their view before that fire tower was there was beautiful, and it's been marred by the tower, and now you're going to exacerbate it by adding Station 5 when they don't need the tower. So please, I would hope that you would reconsider and not vote for this issue, have to go back to re-study, and perhaps they can co-locate at another place. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just respond to the first part there. As you all see, we have five minutes for every speaker, and at the last meeting, we had gone through all the speakers, everybody had spoken, and as I was going on to the next item, there was a card delivered by Mr. Sykes, and he wanted me to reopen oral communications and allow him to speak. The reason why I don't do that is because, once I do that for one person, then if somebody else jumps up and puts a yellow card in, then they have to speak. And it was in a situation where it was going to be a back-and-forth type thing, and you have to have rules, and if we don't have rules, anybody can turn a card in. You've got, you know, last week, I think we had almost an hour before oral communications was completed, so. So there is an opportunity for everybody to speak, you just can't wait until everything's done and then expect us to jump back on the agenda, so. With that, Jess Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I, to echo, well, I'm actually going to discuss item number three on the agenda, in reference to the grants, I to echo Art. We desperately need that grant, if you guys can go forward with it. There's a number of things that I would like to discuss about the program, and one of the concerns is our safety, our kids' safety. We've got kids that are as young as four years old and as old as 60 that are participating, and, and one of the things that we don't have is access to restrooms. We have COVID parties, but I mean, we would desperately need access to facilities. And I know that we're also now a club program, and what that pertains is that we're, we're a travel team, and that's what I coach now, and we're now inviting other cities to come to our city. And it's great, because during recession times that we're in right now, we can invite the visiting teams and also visit our restaurants, our surrounding restaurants on the park. So what I also suggest and invite my parents, because I coach approximately 14 girls, is that every weekend, or every other weekend, we visit one of our local restaurants so that we can help them out. And again, those are some of the benefits of coaching a travel, a travel club team. And then there's a, this program has been, to my understanding, has been in existence for over 20 years, and these kids are long overdue, a place where they can actually call home. And so I know that during times, tough times right now, and the deficit that we're facing, it's hard, but I mean, there's, we're hoping that, you know, working with you guys, and also whatever we can do to help you guys to move forward with this program, you know, let us know. Again, our concern is the school program is now opening their athletic department, and so we're sort of limited in time and space, and so it's just a matter of time, where we're going to have to find another place to conduct our practices and our games. So again, if you guys could move forward with that, with the grants, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. George Ogden.
Evening. My name is George Ogden, in the City of West Covina. Mayor, I've given you some cards there, which is an invite. If you could pass them out to the rest of the council members, and if you have availability on the 25th. On that card, it doesn't let you know this, but it is my birthday, so if you want to come by and bring a present, I'd be very grateful. Cash is welcome. And, come on. Anyway, the national commander will be there attending for about an hour. He lives at a particular post. Some of you have already met him about four or five years ago, when he was the commander for the state of California. And basically, that's all I wanted to make sure, is that you guys were aware of this, and to kind of get it announced out here. Also--
Your birthday or the event?
You better do the birthday. Now, if you come to the event, there's some, you know, food there and stuff like that, I think that'll work well for me and you. So, and while I'm up here, I just want to touch base on the unity program over this past weekend. As a resident, I have to say how neat that was, and it was really nice. As a reporter, I think I have a good story coming up this week on it. And as a commissioner, I need to tell the staff and all those volunteers, everything, thank you for such a great job and the effort that they put out, all right? So thank you, and the city, for everything that you did for that event, and I see there's some little rough edges that we can work it out. So thank you very much, I hope to see you on the 25th.
Thank you. Linda Paul and Alexander Liu.
Good evening, Mayor Herford, members of the council. I am Linda Paul with T-Mobile, and our representative here, Alexander Liu, who's been handling this project for us. And basically, we're here to answer any questions you may have. And do you have any comments, Alexander?
Yes, just on Mr. Sykes's comments about the no-long-term effects of being studied. Radio frequency has been around for over 50 years. There's, there's been countless studies out there showing that the risks are minimal. And as for co-location, the definition for that is to place antennas on an existing structure, so the existing public safety communications tower is, is an existing structure, and we're flush mounting our antennas on that. We're very, very cognizant of the aesthetic impacts, so that's why we went with the flush-mounted antenna design and not antenna arms, where they would be extending from it.
And just let me clarify one thing. Actually, radio frequency's been in use for over 100 years.
No, sorry.
It's been very intensely studied over the course of about the last 50 or 60 years.
Question? Councilmember Armbrust.
Would you have, like, the same amount of concern with the baby monitor as you would with possibly a--
Well, that's an interesting subject that you bring up. In fact, certain items have come into popular use, and people don't even think about the fact that a wireless device actually emits radio frequency. Baby monitors is one of those things, cordless phones in homes, wireless modems. In fact, because they're used in your house, your exposure to that RF is actually less than what you would get from a cell site.
Okay.
And in fact, if you carry your phone around, you're being exposed to more RF from your phone alone than you would be from a cell site.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Herb Redholtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, and to the council, to staff, and everybody that's here. I, too, am up here on consent calendar item number two, which I would respectfully request that this council pull from the consent calendar for separate action. That would also give the opportunity for the staff report to be presented to the public. I would specifically also request that Attachment C be presented in its entirety, since it deals with a lot of misleading and deceiving information that has been distributed to the residents of this city over the last several months by the individual who I am now going to discuss a little bit, who was up here a few moments ago, Mr. Frederick Sykes. He attended the planning commission meeting, and for the record, I am a planning commissioner for the city. This item was heard by the planning commission in late March. We had a public hearing. The item was approved unanimously on a 5-0 vote. I might add that no one, not Mr. Sykes, nor anyone who spoke in opposition, appealed that decision to you. So that is why the lease agreement is in front of you tonight. Subsequent to the meeting, a few days afterwards, on the following Monday, Mr. Sykes had a letter in the Tribune, which, as I read it Monday morning, I became angry and I became upset, angry and upset by the intimidation, the-- upset. Angry and upset by the intimidation and the innuendo that permeated the letter, the fact that as his pattern, he does not let the facts get in his way. He ignores them. And I, for one, am tired of it. I'm tired of him deceiving and misleading the residents and particularly the voters of this city by basically lying to them. I will quote, "He portrayed that as a new tower that is being constructed there. It is obviously not. It is an existing tower. It is being co-located. You can, you know, mince words around all you want, but this is what we want to do in the city. We want to co-locate towers." So you don't need to build another tower. That's what we want to do. He talks about that the community was cheated when the utility cabinets for the cell towers in Shadow Oak Park were installed above ground contrary to the standards of the neighborhood." That's a quote. "I've lived in that neighborhood for almost 25 years, and I can tell you, no one has come to my door, knocked on the door and said, 'Herb, here are the neighborhood standards.'" Just so you know, it's never happened. "I do know that we have a municipal code in this city, and those towers were built according to the municipal code, like it or not." In his website, he's saying they're not. By golly, they are. And if I'm wrong, I'm sure staff will correct me. "Built according to the code." He talks about real estate values. Well, you know what? Real estate values, there's no proof either way that they go up or they go down because of cell towers. But I will tell you this, that real estate people are now saying that because more and more people are using their cellphone as their sole phone usage, they no longer have a landline, that if you have bad cell reception in a particular area, it makes the marketability of your home harder to do. That's a fact. Let me see. You know, and I will tell you one thing, that I'm, wherever and whenever Mr. Sykes portrays something that is less than accurate, that is an absolute falsehood, that I will be there. No matter what medium, no matter what form it's in, that I, for one, am not going to allow the residents to be misled. I don't know what his purpose is, whether it's political or what, but it is a negativity that is unnecessary and is not in the best interest of the city. And I'll leave you with one thing. If Mr. Sykes' credibility was in your gas tank, you would be running on empty. Thank you.
John Solis?
Good evening. I didn't want to follow that. I don't like negativity. My name is John Solis. I'm a resident of West Covina for many, many years. Usually, when I'm up here, it's usually for two subjects that are dear to my heart, graffiti and cell towers. And you know that you and I are good partners on the graffiti issue. But on cell towers, we are at opposite ends. I'm very, very afraid of cell towers. I'll tell you why. I didn't want to say this tonight, but I'll say it tonight. I'm a cancer survivor. I spent an hour and a half today on MRI, continually looking for more cancer. Just the issue, just the possibility of what an RF may do scares me. I live right behind Shadow Oak Park. And at Shadow Oak Park, you know that there are two cell towers there with three cell tower companies. I can look right from my den, and I can see those cell towers, and it scares me. Yes, there's been, in due respect to the people from T-Mobile, yes, there's been a lot of studies that doesn't prove positively that it does cause cancer. But those studies have been funded primarily by the telecommunications company. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 that prohibits me from talking to you about my cancer was funded by the telecommunications company. Now, the only thing I wanted to say tonight, I just wanted to be very brief. In doing my research on the cell towers, I came across an item that addresses the International Association of Firefighters. And it says that they are opposed. They adopted this resolution in August of 2004. My only question to you, City Council, Mayor, did our local 3226 Firefighters Association concur with the location of these antennas at fire station number five? And in closing, with due respect to your religious denominations, I'd like to wish all of you a happy Easter season. Thank you.
You too.
I'll give copies of this to the city clerk on that article.
Thank you. Julian Soto?
Councilmembers, Mayor, I just wanted to kind of briefly talk about item Agenda Number Three. I'm actually a person who's been, I grew up in the league, and for soccer, for me, has been my lifestyle. I've actually started when we were playing in Walmarado, and I've seen the league kind of locate in different areas, from Walmarado to Palm View, to now where it's at, Edgewood. So it's kind of had to bounce around. And as a young child, I didn't quite understand exactly what it was. But for me, it was all about soccer. And as you can see, all the kids that are here today, they're, you know, they're excited, and they're here for one thing. They probably don't realize what we're actually here for, but they're here because they know that, you know, their soccer fields are in jeopardy. So having item Agenda Number Three passed is very important to me. I have two daughters. I'm born and raised in the city. As I said before, I played soccer. While it's been, I still play soccer, and I coach, and I teach at Covina High School. But for me, being a member of, you know, growing up in the City of West Covina has been very special to me. And to be able to coach some of the kids, and, you know, like I said, it's an important thing in our life. For some of these kids, you know, soccer's one of the things that they really look forward to after school. I know, you know, being a teacher, it's important to do well in school. But for me, growing up in a single-parent family, that was my outlet. So it's important for some of these kids to have the fields. It's important for me as a parent so that it keeps our kids out of trouble. So please support, if you could, Item Agenda Number Three, because it's an important necessity for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes oral communications. I'm going to ask that Items Two and Three be pulled from the consent calendar. Councilmember Toohey?
Before that's done, oh, well, we're going to do Two and Three, so I'll make my comments then.
Okay, let's start, since we have a lot of people here for Item Three. Let's start with Item Three. Can we just get a brief staff report? This is an important item for the City of West Covina. The council has asked that this be brought forward, and I think just some general information as to what the Prop 84 grant would provide.
I'll have Ms. Neal go ahead and present that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you. In 2006, California voters passed Proposition 84, and part of that proposition was to dedicate $368 million towards statewide park programs. So in light of that, Proposition 84 awards competitive grants to really critically underserved communities in California. And in order to qualify for this grant, you have to meet one of two requirements. The first would either be meeting a threshold for a low median income. The second one would be to meet a threshold for parkland deficit, which is really defined as less than three acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. The grant allows us to apply for projects ranging anywhere from $100,000 to $5 million. And this grant, unbelievably, does not require a match from the city. The council might recall that we originally were going to apply for the dog park, for Prop 84, the Dog Park Project. After staff attended the detailed training from Prop 84 in the State of California, we determined that unfortunately, that project didn't meet the criteria for this grant, so we're going to pursue other grants for the dog park. However, we just didn't want to let go of the opportunity for Prop 84. And because of that, we really want the council to consider, as does West Covina Youth Soccer that are here tonight, the Orangewood Park renovation project as a qualified grant application for Prop 84. For all the reasons that you've heard tonight, basically, I could underscore each one of them. West Covina Youth Soccer is a really strong league in this community. We're proud of them. Unfortunately, they're the only sports council group that doesn't currently have access to city-owned property, so they rely on Edgewood Middle School, because the city doesn't currently have any soccer fields. So with the conversion of Edgewood Middle School to Edgewood High School, I should correct myself now, there is some potential that their future could be compromised. And we'd like to do everything we can now to hopefully mitigate any compromise in access to their fields. Obviously, when you convert a middle school to a high school, you could bring with that, or West Covina Unified School District may bring with that project, high school-level athletics, which would then have an impact on the fields where they currently play. The other item I wanted to mention to you is that, of course, if West Covina Youth Soccer is impacted by any field use or Edgewood High School, and I want to remind everyone here tonight that this is a highly competitive grant, we would be asking the State of California, under this Bond Act, for the maximum possible amount, $5 million. That $5 million would go toward, let me just read the list to you, lighted soccer fields, which would be great, right? A snack bar, universally accessible playground, picnic area with barbecues, walking path, public meeting room, and storage facility, restrooms, shade canopies, and parking lot improvements. So I guess I just want to remind everybody that going after this grant, again, it's highly competitive. We will do everything we can to be awarded this grant. Of course, in the event that, for some reason, the city isn't awarded, we will work very closely with West Covina Youth Soccer to mitigate any impacts of them in the future. But we'd like to use all the planning that's occurred on this project. The City Council in 2003 took the first step and created a soccer subcommittee, where we started to identify the needs that this group has. And since then, from 2003 to 2008, a number of steps, a number of community involvement pieces occurred. And in 2008, the City Council approved the conceptual plan. For all of those reasons, it makes this a really viable project in order for us to submit a competitive grant. So we would recommend that the council consider this and adopt the resolution this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Toohey?
My kids both played in that league many years ago. Obviously, based on my height, my kids outgrew soccer and became basketball players, but that's another story. And I do remember Julian over at Walmarado Park. I obviously owned the dairy across the street for many years. Since 1977, we've owned that business over there. And even though I sold the business, I still retain the land. I know, I had hair back then, so pardon me. You probably would recognize, I've gained 200 pounds and lost my hair. But I don't think everyone understands in the sports community, so you understand also, at West Covina Youth Pony Baseball, when you look at their fields, you see five baseball fields. Only one of those are the City of West Covina's. We're concerned no different with Walnut Grove Intermediate School there, that they could be displaced at any point in time, because we only own the one baseball field. The most southern, going towards Merced, the rest are on school property. At West Covina Girls' Softball, likewise, there's five or six fields there. We own one. All the rest are on Cameron School Site, and we're always concerned because of that, that we may not have space there. West Covina National Little League, only one of the baseball fields is on park site. The other two are at Del Nordy School, which is closed down, which could be sold, or who knows what may happen. Sometimes that would work. If we could acquire the property, the school district has never wanted to sell that. Pacific Coast Little League, only one of the fields they have, they have two fields. The other one's at Roland Elementary on Covina Valley Unified School District site. And West Covina Youth Soccer, which, and I understand the concern, Art, is 100% on Edgewood Middle School and Edgewood Baccalaurate School Site. And that at any point in time could change its uses, and we have. That's part of the problem with building a restroom there. One of you guys brought up a restroom. The school district won't allow us to build a restroom in the middle of their campus. We have tried to work with them, because we have a joint-use agreement with a pool, to allow at least the pool to be open for the bathrooms, even though the gate would be closed on the other side. That has sometimes been problematic, working with them, to get a joint-use agreement. In fact, the school has taken back all their facilities from the city, and most of the time, I believe you deal directly with the school now. We used to have a master lease on all the school property in the West Covina Unified School District. They took that away from us, and they deal directly with the leagues now. So we always put up our insurance as the backstop. That's no longer the case. So, I mean, those times have changed. I would fully, and I do fully support this, but I want to make sure that West Covina Youth Soccer understands, by fully supporting this, we're also displacing West Covina Pony Colt Baseball. That is their only facility, and we have to find them a facility likewise, because they're going from one field to zero. So if we're fortunate enough to get the funding, we still have to work on where we can put older kid baseball field, because of the size of the kids and the age group. They need certain depths in the fields, that most of our older fields that we have available aren't deep enough. Orangewood Little League closed down. We have that facility over there, but the fields aren't deep enough. You'd break all the windows in the apartment complex. The other thing I want to make sure, because you heard some of the people raising the change in the neighborhood about the cellphone tower. When we go over there, and if we're fortunate to get this grant, and we start putting up lighting towers, new light facilities, fixtures, where there's never been one, you're going to have the same type of argument made, that now you have a light fixture where I've never seen nothing. You've impacted me. And this is what we always have to deal with. We have dealt with this. We lit every sports field in our city, and we did Edgewood Track then, and they did not have lights before. If you recall, we put those in so the people could walk at night, and for the soccer, could use some of it. But those do come with impacts. And then you have another group of people that will sit over there and say, "You're ruining my neighborhood. I've never had a light there." Well, we also have 1,200 kids in West Covina Youth Soccer, and I understand that you guys need some type of home. And I will fully support this tonight to move forward with this. And I also would like to put it on Supervisor Antonovich's program to potentially use the $10 million fund. I don't know what we have, where we're at on that. And you understand, based on our redevelopment, we have to pay the county back $10 million. There's a chance, and I want to say small chance, but a chance that we can use some of the funds potentially with Supervisor's approval to potentially help this if we have problems at the Prop 84 level. So hopefully, we have two whacks at this to try to get it done. But I will fully support it tonight, and I'd like to make a motion, if that's possible, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, moved in second. Councilwoman Lane?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and I wanted to thank the parents and the kids who are coming out tonight. You know, I'm really proud that we're going after this. I want to thank staff for their hard work. I know they're going to do everything they can to get it here for us. You know, our kids deserve this in this community. We need a home for our soccer. And I'm really happy, and I hope we get it. And so we'll keep our fingers crossed. So with that.
Councilwoman Arbers?
And I concur with that. I was a U6 soccer coach, and I think soccer's very important for the kids to get out there and just be a part of a team. I think it's really important. I hope we can get this grant. I was sat on a subcommittee when I was Community Services Commission, and I know that there's a need for soccer fields. So hopefully, we can get this and work everything out with all of the leagues. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Let me concur and thank everybody for coming out tonight. The great thing about the process that we've followed here, had we not done the things like adopt a conceptual plan or put the wheels in motion, you know, eight years ago, we couldn't even apply for the grant. So it's great that, and just to give you an example, we have an equestrian facility where we had the same thing come up a couple meetings ago, where we adopted some, you know, maybe wish lists for the future over there. We may never get them, but at least we've got everything lined up so that we can apply for this grant money. So hopefully, we'll be the recipient of $5 million, and we'll be back before, I don't know, when would this be awarded? Do you have a timeframe? Do you have a timeframe?
The grant is due July 1, and I believe they can start notification on the awards in December. Yeah, I think it's about six months.
And this is tax revenue, or this is something we voted on, so?
Yeah, California voters.
So, they can't take this to balance the budget?
Right. And this is the second of a two-year cycle. So, we've, the money's already been committed last year, and this is, looks like to be the remainder of that money, so.
Great. All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thanks for coming out.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Tuohy.
Likewise, like I said, that I've owned the Rockview Dairy property since 1977. Since, we do have a cell phone tower on site, and we got it in 1991, 20 years ago, three years before I was on council. I have to abstain on voting due to a conflict of interest at 551 East Fine Avenue, and I will vacate the room.
Okay, this is item number two on the agenda. Lease agreement with T-Mobile to co-locate a wireless facility at Fire Station Number Five. Like to get a staff report, and if we could highlight the 15 items, I'd appreciate it. Kind of the...
Mr. Freeland.
I'll wait for Count Mayor Protam Tuohi to leave the room.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Sorry about this situation. Before each night is a lease agreement between the city of West Covina and T-Mobile for the construction, or excuse me, the addition or co-location of six flush-mounted antennas on an existing city-owned public safety radio tower at Fire Station Number Five. As part of this project, T-Mobile will be placing those six antennas, as you see in the picture above me, on an existing radio tower. Here's the before shot, here's the after. As you can see, the antennas are flush-mounted. We are not constructing a new tower, as well as, T-Mobile has agreed to make some minor repairs to the walls adjacent to the fire station, plant an olive tree, and other amenities inside the area for their equipment, which will be blocked by the wall there at the fire station. So, it won't be visible to the public driving around the center. The terms of the proposed lease with T-Mobile shall be for five years, with a rent of $2,300 a month, with a 3% escalator each year. In addition, T-Mobile will pay a one-time installation fee of $30,000 to the city. A copy of the proposed lease is attached to your staff report as Attachment B. The revenue for the addition of the new antennas at Fire Station Six will generate $57,600 in the first year, over $175,000 over five years, and over $1.3 million over 30 years, which is the potential term of this lease. The lease is for a term of five years, with five additional periods of five years that could be added on to the lease at T-Mobile's request. Just so people have a little bit of an understanding of the revenues that these projects generate for the city, currently, the city is generating about $245,000 in rents from approximately eight cell towers in our community. In addition, the cellular telephone companies also require to have a business license with the city of West Covina. And that is based on a portion of the revenues that they generate in West Covina. And currently, that is, generates additional $285,000 in general fund dollars to the city of West Covina. So, with the current cell towers we have in West Covina, we're generating about $530,000 in general fund dollars. So, again, this tower will be adding some additional revenues to the general fund. There was mention this evening to Attachment C. And so, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want me to read it in its entirety, or just highlight some of the sections?
I can just highlight.
Okay. The first mention was, folks have been expressing some concerns about radio frequency emissions. As everyone has mentioned tonight, cell phones communicate with cell towers through what we call radio frequency waves. Much like a radio station communicates with your radio at your home, or your radio in your car, okay? At very high levels of concentration, radio frequency waves can generate energy and heat up. That's how your microwave oven operates at your home, okay? So, we are surrounded by RF emissions throughout our course of our days. The cell phone I have here on my hip generates more radio frequency emissions than the cell tower in our community. So, even knowing that, residents have expressed concerns that these are cancer causers. Well, I want to make a comment here from the American Cancer Society, who we truly believe is one of the leading agencies with regards to cancer research. According to the American Cancer Society, and again, this information is in Attachment C of the staff report. According to the American Cancer Society, the energy level of RF waves is relatively low, especially when compared with the types of radiation that are known to increase cancer risks, such as gamma rays, X-rays, and ultraviolet light. The energy of RF waves given off by cell phone towers is not enough to break down chemical bonds in DNA molecules, which is how these stronger forms of radiation may lead to cancer. A second issue has to do with wavelength. RF waves have long wavelengths, which can only be concentrated to about an inch or two in size. This makes it unlikely that any energy from RF waves could be concentrated enough to affect individual cells in your body. Third, even if RF waves were somehow able to affect cells in the body at higher doses, the level of RF waves present at ground level is very low, well below the recommended limits. Levels of energy from RF waves near cell phone towers are not significantly different than the background levels of RF radiation in urban areas from other sources, such as your radio or television broadcast stations. In addition, there are three expert agencies that classify cancer-causing exposures. The International Agency for Research on Cancer, the National Toxicology Program, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, all of which have not classified cell phone towers as any kind of cancer-causing potential. Two additional ones, the World Health Organization states, "Considering the very low exposure levels and research results collected to date, there is no convincing scientific evidence that weak RF signals from base stations and wireless networks cause any adverse health effects." The last one is from the Federal Communications Commission, which states the same information as the others. Lastly, as we move on, I think it's also important that we mention that the cellular telephone antennas, not just the towers, but the antennas are placed on buildings throughout our community. They may be on, for example, I know that there's some on the Lakes Building. But in addition, we have these cellular antennas at Queen of the Valley Hospital on the campus there. So, if there was any concern of cancer causing, I would imagine that the hospitals would take that into consideration. There has been comments, and I want to make sure that the residents are clear, that the city council does not have the authority to deny any kind of an application for a cell tower based on RF emissions. And that is, but was passed in 1996 in the Federal Telecommunications Act, which states, it expressly states that local government regulation of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects on radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with FCC regulations concerning such emissions, the city cannot forbid those applications. So, for example, if there was a cell tower that was being constructed on a private property, the city of West Covina, as long as that cell company is meeting the requirements, both of their planning zoning requirements, and that at the FCC, they can be approved for that site, regardless if the city council felt that, you know, we had a concern about RF emissions. The city council does not have the authority to preempt federal law. There was discussion about the fire department not supporting this, or being concerned about the exposure to the RF emissions. And attached to the staff report is a letter for both our police and fire chief, expressing the benefits of having this additional telecommunications system in our community. One of the other items on Attachment C is, there has been comments in the past that there's this new technology, the size of what's called a Rubik's Cube, that many of us remember playing with when, back in the 80s, that there's this new technology called the Alcatel Lucent Light Radio. What it is, is a small little device, it's the size of a Rubik's Cube, that is being tested towards the end of this year. It's not been proven to work, it, there has not been manufactured, but what they're saying is, is that this technology may complement cell towers. What these devices will be allowed, the cell companies to do, is to place these in highly urban areas, perhaps at Dodger Stadium, perhaps in downtown Los Angeles, where it's very difficult for them to locate a tower. And these devices can help amplify the cellular communications. These do not have long ranges. That's what the benefit of the cell towers are, even though some residents are saying that cell towers are obsolete. And it's kind of ironic, because the designer of this device actually said cell tower devices aren't, excuse me, cell towers are not obsolete, which Ted Sizer, head of the Wireless Research at Alcatel Lucent Bell Laboratory, sees light radio as a complementary technology to existing cell towers. Those big antennas still serve a purpose in our community, providing long-distance signals or beams down a highway. So, even the designer of this is saying that this device will not make cell towers obsolete. We do need those in our community. Cell tower effects on property values, I think T-Mobile addressed that issue rather well, as well as, I think, one of our planning commissioners. There is no effect on property values, both either for or against. The Wireless Association has made the argument that with 96% of the American population having a cell phone, and 27% of all households no longer have a landline, that if you don't have good cellular reception, that that may actually impact negatively your home values. There was also comments at the planning commission meeting, as well as at previous city council meetings, as this has come up, about us having over 400 antennas in West Covina. That's a little of misinformation for the simple fact that we may have 400 antennas, but you've got to remember, each cell tower may have a dozen antennas on itself. But more importantly, a lot of the businesses in our community have antennas. If you have a mini-market here in West Covina, you're going to have an antenna for lottery, you're going to have an antenna for your credit card business, so there's going to be multiple antennas on each business. And as you know, West Covina has a very high concentration of businesses. Cell towers are 90 feet tall. No, cell towers aren't 90 feet tall. This is not a cell tower. This is a public radio facility that the police and fire department utilizes for their emergency services. We found that there's an opportunity to co-locate a cellular antenna on our facility, at both the benefit to the community through better cellular phone coverage, better service for our public safety, and it happens to generate some revenue, much-needed revenue for the city. At the planning commission, there was also discussion about the placement of cell towers in West Covina benefiting some of the cities outside of West Covina. Well, that's important to West Covina, that we help our residents, but also be a part of the regional plan to help support our neighborhood communities. Because much like when they put a cell tower in their community, we will be benefiting from those type of constructions. It's, a good example is our award-winning senior center. We provide the funding for that senior center, but yet, people from all over the Sangiovese Valley make the effort to come to our center to enjoy the wonderful programming and the food. I think that pretty much responds to some of the comments we've heard over the last several weeks regarding this, and both myself and T-Mobile is available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. We have, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Let me just say, you know, we've dealt with these cell tower issues for a while. This has to do with, actually, the planning commission has approved this. This has to do with the lease of the property and the revenue to the city. And I think that the statement that the city will receive over a half million dollars in revenue this year is a pretty powerful statement, which, if you compare it to some of our other retail businesses, it, you know, equals well more than I think our largest car dealership would bring in. So, it is a considerable source of revenue. And I want to point out, too, that the council in the past has denied cell towers based on the location, the aesthetics, maybe blocking of view, things like that. As was stated, we cannot deny a cell tower for health reasons because the federal government preempted any local agency from doing that with the Act of 1976. But the thing that's frustrating, I think, is misinformation, and I'm glad that we do have the correct information, and that we do get that out there so people can digest it. You don't have to believe it. You have your, everybody has their own right to whatever they want to believe. Back in the early 80s, people told, in the city, said BKK landfill was totally safe. And later on, we found out it was one of the most toxic landfills in the world. So, you can judge for yourself what you want, but the reality, I think, in the world today is that we're not going to go backwards. Cell towers are something that, huge industry. They proliferate all of our families. Every one in my family has a cell phone. I think everybody in the audience here probably is either, if they don't own one, has used one at some point in time. So, in order to have cell phones, you need cell towers. And just because the council moves forward on one, doesn't mean we're going to move forward on all of them, but it is nice to have the facts in front of us and to make an educated decision. So, with that, we have a motion in second. Councilman Arberst.
You know, I just wanted to make a comment regarding this letter that we have here from the police chief and also the fire chief. And what he was saying is that when individuals dial 911 on their cell phone, the call is routed to the nearest cell tower, regardless if they are a subscriber to the company that owns that cell tower. Therefore, the call is received quicker by a 911 dispatcher. Also, too, if an individual dials 911 and then becomes unconscious, once the call is received by the 911 dispatcher, a message is displayed on the dispatcher's monitor as to the location of the cell tower where the call originated from, with an approximate location of the distressed individual. You know, if our police chief and our fire chief, who are concerned about the public safety, if they support this, and also, too, the American Cancer Society, which I trust, support this, then I am in support of it.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, city manager.
Just one further point on the same letter. I want to make sure the audience is aware that our police and fire units also use the mobile data units as part of their normal day-to-day activity as well, and it's important that we have these technologies available to us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Okay, if we could get Councilmember Tuohy back in. We have to complete the rest of the consent calendar, and I believe that's it for tonight.
Approve the minutes.
Approve the minutes. That could be part of the consent, yeah. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, move on to council member commissioner reports. Any reports from the council? Any AB 1, 2, 3, 4 reports? Let me make a comment about the past weekend. If you were at City Hall, on Saturday, we had the Community Unity Day, which was kind of an interesting event, where we had people bring old sporting goods and games to City Hall here, which the intent was, if you brought something, you could trade it for something else. I don't know that people traded stuff, but probably, they probably took mine. Mine was the best stuff, but...
It wasn't used that much.
Yeah, especially those frisbees that said, "Re-elect Steve Herford," because they're out of date. But anyway, the remainder of the stuff that was left over, which was considerable, was shipped, or is going to be shipped over to Uganda, Nupala? Kapala, Uganda. See, that screwed me up all weekend. I'm trying to remember that name. Kapala, Uganda, okay. And then at 10:30, we started with our Easter egg hunts, the youngest kids first, and we had a real good turnout for that, and proceeded each half hour to have different age groups. So, it was a great day. We had a caterer who did a great job. We had music and giant slides and things like that. So, it was a nice event. It was the first year for community unity, so hopefully, next year, it will grow even more. And then this coming week is Arbor Day, so we'll have some nice events there, so. Any other comments? We have a couple adjournments. Councilmember Tuohy?
I have a couple adjournments also.
Okay, let's go to Councilwoman Arberst.
I just wanted to say thank you to staff, and also to ITT and Kistu Chief Foundation, and the other people who had been a supporter of this community. and the other people who had been a supporter of this community unity. I think it's great, you know, I know times are tough, and it's really neat to see such a large city that we are, but we are very community-oriented, so I just, props to the city.
Okay, Councilmember Tuohy.
Just some adjournments, one, Josephine Solis, which is Councilmember Jones Solis's grandmother from the City of La Puente, she passed away, if we could send our condolences to the family, and also, and I know it's a little bit later, but I'd like to get out there, former mayor Joe Alderetti, former mayor that served when Steve and I have been here from the City of La Puente, and he was this, most recently, president of the La Puente Valley County Water Board. He passed away also, and Kevin Feeney, who won two world championships here with our baseball team at West Covina Youth Pony Baseball, with Mike Pill, they won two world, they won three or four altogether, but two at this age group here, and it's just amazing, they have three or four professional baseball players out of that group of kids. Brett Pill, I believe, plays for the Giants organization, and his brother Tyler Pill is about ready to make the majors, he's a star pitcher for the Cal State Flautino Titans, and it's Rob Satello's nephews, but Mike Pill, the father of their kids, was a Pittsburgh Pirate, tell he blew out his arm, but it's a tremendous baseball family, and they're going to have three professional baseball players in that family, so. Just want to make the motion in memory of Kevin Feeney, who was a coach of all those Kevin, like I said, was a longtime friend of mine, lived on Lark Ellen, and just, like I said, gave his entire life to those kids, he did not have kids, but he volunteered all his time over there, he'll be sorely missed.
Okay, let me add to that, we also want to adjourn in the memory of Joanne Moses, who was our 2010 West Covina senior volunteer, she had been in the hospice, Citrus Valley Hospice, and sorry to hear that she had passed. Also, our former Blue Star member, Stephen Cabrera, who was killed in an automobile accident two weeks ago. Sergeant Cabrera served two tours in Iraq, was discharged from the United States Marine Corps two years ago, and had recently re-enlisted in the Marine Corps, he was reported, was going to be reported to the Marine Corps in May. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Moses and Cabrera families, as we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of their family, along with Kevin Feeney, and who was the other one?
Josephine Solis and Joe Alderetti, if I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion, I'll second that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0, we adjourn.